Today is Friday, May the 5th, 2023. It's 10:30 a.m. We have two items on our agenda. Item number one is a banner request from Efer McDowell Health. City Clerk Ashley Raeder is going to present that.
Efer McDowell Health is asking to hang their banner for Mental Health Month for the remainder of May. This is outside of our three-week timeframe, but we allowed them to do it last year, so we're just asking you all to allow them to do it this year as well.
Okay. Is there a motion from the commission? Any discussion?
I move we approve the banner request.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions, comments, discussion?
What is, what is the banner for again? Just curious.
Mental Health Month. May is Mental Health Month. And this will, Brass Band has a banner request for Monday, but we'll just shift that banner down. There'll be room out front for both banners to hang for the remainder of the month.
Okay. All those in favor of honoring this request say yes.
Yes.
Those who say no, nay. All right, Kevin changed his mind. Thank you all. Second item on the agenda is the draft operating budget discussion. City Commissioner Colby can start us off.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. I wanted to talk for, for a half second. That seems really loud, doesn't it? Let me do this. Maybe that's a little better. Assembling the budget, I, I want to do a flow chart. I, I didn't have time to make it a pretty graphic and throw it up there. But I want to communicate that today is just one of the steps in that process, just like yesterday was. And, and we, we focused on some of the personnel changes originally. We talked about revenue a little bit over the last couple of months about, you know, how, whether or not we need to change anything. We, we, we proposed the lowering of the insurance premium tax, which you all agreed with. And so we, we've been building the elements of the budget. One side's revenue, one side's expenses. And, and so then yesterday's community agencies, and so we're not asking for a decision on, on those, you know, today or anything like that. But what we're trying to do is build the pieces. And so this is, today is a step in demonstrating where we think the operating, proposed operating budget is. Once you get above that, which includes some of the personnel concepts that we talked about, the only personnel change in, in the operating budget that's in front of you is adding the one position for the EIT. We want to make sure that we have a balanced budget before we start adding other positions. I do feel that that will be a valuable asset to the, to the community. So, which is why I went ahead and tried to, tried to fund that. If you all agree with it, then, then we know it's funded. If you all don't want to do that, then that number will back out. But the, uh, once we, we, we've talked about the end-of-year projections, we talked about all those pieces. And so, so then we're going to have a draft operating budget that's in front of you. That's what our proposal is, subject to your all's review and comments and, and influence. And then, um, we will do the, the capital. We'll talk about what capital program looks like with, and largely either funded by debt service or the fund balance, which we've done a good job with having fund balance and, and trying to tailor the spending tied to the, the fund balance and trying to maintain a fund balance. And so that we've not added debt in two, a little bit, several years now. And then as, once we have that capital discussion, then we see what's left for the community agencies. We talk about the economic development side, the airport board, how we handle those, those costs. Then we'll roll those into the budget. And then after next week's meeting, then we'll have, you know, a, a full assembled budget with all those elements to, all of it added into a summary. Summary sheets for each, each department. So today, we, we're giving you, so the utility fund, for example, you're getting the, the full utility fund sheet. You're getting each department in the utility fund. And so then the next week, I will have is the utility fund summary for you, which will show all those departments, just the total of those departments. So this is the detail that will be on the summary page next week, subject to your all's comments, right? And so what we want to do is give these to you today. We're not asking you to understand or know what is in these documents. We know you have had them very long. And so over the next week, as you go home, please ask us questions if you want to get into the numbers more detail. So that by next week, we, we start to make the numbers look and, and be influenced by your all's comments. Okay. So now, Lee's put together a summary slideshow for you that depicts the numbers on the sheet in graphic form and the numbers that we've talked about in graphic form, right? And so go ahead, Lee, and let's get started with that.
Before she does that, I've been scratching my head all morning long, but I wanted to say Happy Cinco de Mayo Day to all those citizens in our community who celebrate Cinco de Mayo Day. I know all the members of the commission celebrate that, so I wanted to call that to our attention. Thank you.
Okay. So we are, um, gonna go through, um, operations on the appropriation side, the expense side, and, um, the draft revenue budget for operations. Like Earl had said, capital. The, the sheets are in your packet technically, the capital. They haven't been filled out. They're blank for the proposed column. It's, it's easier to print them with them in there than to pull them out after the fact, and the page numbers stay sequential. But today, we're really going to focus on operations, which needs to be balanced. You, you should not be spending more than the estimated revenue you have coming in. That's a really good way to put you in a, a bad place financially. I'm gonna start with the general fund. And as we go through, I'll try to go through which page, pages of the large packet we'll be going through. And, um, you guys ask any questions about any of the, um, individual departments that you have, or if you want to go into something further on one of the specifics. So general fund, um, this is fiscal year '24 operating revenue compared to expenses and your, or your appropriations. We are budgeted for fiscal '24 revenue at $20,752.07. That includes your taxes, your property taxes, your license fees, your, which is your occupational taxes, some of your franchise taxes, your insurance premium, your alcohol, um, some of your service revenues that we have, your, um, we have a few minor other, um, recurring revenues and your intergovernmental revenues. There is a, um, sixth category of, seventh category of, um, revenue that we have not displayed. That would be if we did do any capital that required some debt service or things of that nature. But that really comes with a discussion of capital and what we want to fund and what we want to, um, debt service. So that's excluded for this discussion. This, and when, when my approach to estimating our revenues, and I think Earl and I are pretty well on the same page, is, is we, you know, track historical trends compared to what we've, you know, received year-to-date for the current year. And then kind of consider economic factors that, you know, we know of or that is trend, that factors that are trending. And, and try to make a good, um, judgment call as to where we think we'll end up next year.
Yeah, let's talk about that for a half second. The, remember, I talked a lot about the Huntington Bank summary, where they talked about recovery from COVID and when the economy would be. So as we go through the City Managers Association, they, they consistently provide that information to us annually. And so the, what I have steered towards over the last, really four years of, of observing municipal government is I've, I've tended to, to rely heavily on that report because it's been fairly accurate over the last few years, particularly in response to COVID. It's been very conservative. So the things that, that has been indicated, and, and I, you know, I want to say that the, the assets in the bank that's doing the reports, like, you know, $50 billion or $40 billion in Kentucky in, in, out of the Northern Kentucky area. And so, so they, they, you know, it's important for them to get it right, too. And so when, when they're looking at us and saying that your revenue trends are gonna, gonna do this the way we see the economy, with COVID, with the impact of COVID, they've been fairly accurate so far. And, and, but again, on the conservative side. So we, we are, I personally am still monitoring that report, looking at it and, and, you know, allowing that to steer my mindset to a certain degree on where the city's revenue is trending. Net profits, occupational license, those two key factors, um, for us. And, and so we're still a bit conservative. She and I both are, and, and I think that's just both our natures. And, and so, um, really, it's kind of, those, those collective things are, are influencing. When we're projecting the, the revenue forecast, that's, those are the things that we're using. It's not just, you know, us, you know, guessing based on last year's information and, and revenue received against budget. We're, we're looking at a lot of historical data and, and I'm, we're still both relying on outside influence to, to make sure we're in the realm of, of reason.
Oh, could I ask a real quick question?
Absolutely.
Lee, on the big, on the big sheets, if, um, the estimated revenue for 2023 is 21,2?
Yes.
Or, yeah?
Yes.
And then the actualize of the end of February is 16. Do we think we'll get there? Are we gonna be pretty close?
So I think we're gonna be really close to the, cause this, so we get a lot of spikes in certain revenues in, um, April, May, and June. So like you have your alcohol license, those come in a lot. You have bigger spikes and you have a, like a, a cycle, a dip that hits about February and March in occupational stuff. And then those quarter ends where they're reporting wages and net profits, those spike back up in, um, May and June. The last I checked, we were really, really close already to some of those numbers. So we, there is a very small possibility that we even go above that 21. But we've reduced it down a little bit because there are still some of those negative indicators that are out there for the economy. And, um, we want to be a little bit more conservative just to cover our butts, right?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
So general fund, this is your revenues over the last several fiscal years. And the, the, the stacks in your bar chart are, um, each, each fiscal year is one column, and the type of revenue is a different color. We've talked about this in the last couple of meetings. You do have a significant portion of your revenue built into that license fee category. You've increased in the, since fiscal year 18, total revenues, you've increased compared to what we're estimating for fiscal year '24, about 1.1 million, which is about a five, 5.2% increase compared to fiscal '23. Like I had just said, we were estimating slightly, um, under what we're gonna end fiscal '23 at, which is about a 2.5% decrease.
Hold on that slide for just a second. The, if you take out the two COVID year impacts and you, and you do a trend line on the, on the 18, 19, 20, and then 23, that's probably more normal growth for us. We, we have a, a very, um, sustained, but, but very moderate low, low growth rate over the years. And then the next thing, what I'd like to point out is, so, so when we're talking about being conservative, if we project FY '23 to end up, so what you can observe is, and she's noted on the left, is that we are projecting to receive next year 2% less than we received this year, right? That's not to say, that's, that, we want to make sure that we don't overinflate our revenue to, to match an expenditure or to create this illusion that there's a bunch of money to, we, we want to make sure that the city is stable, right?
And, and I did note also fiscal '22, and that, that pulled into a little bit, I think, of the last part of fiscal '21 and the first part of fiscal '23. You did see some unusual and not, and trends that won't be sustained in profits. A lot of folks reported significant profits during, during COVID. Like a lot of, a lot of, depending on the revenue or depending on the industry, right, they, they, um, may not have been doing well. But some, some industries really did well. And that, those trends, that's why you see that one big spike in fiscal '22. Your, your occupational collections were higher than what will continue. It'll, it'll go back down to what is quote-unquote an average or with a slight increase.
Yeah, and your penalties and forfeitures, too. You'll notice that LaBrowne section was really high. At, at, it was disproportionately high that year, which that's not, for me, that's not, you know, that's not something you should budget against, right? It should be more of the normal range.
So I did include just a couple of, of facts, um, or just economic facts, you know? Since fiscal year, um, 2018, median household incomes have increased, this is US-wide, about 17%. That, that percentage is probably very similar for Kentucky. I can't get that actual percentage-wise. But Kentucky's median household income as of now is $48,000, um, $48,840. Compared to US, which in 2021 was 75. So while we do see some trends that mimic the national average, Kentucky is, you know, has its own, um, cycles.
Its own scale.
So revenues are all on page one for the general fund of our giant sheet. If you guys have any questions about revenue, we'll go on to expenditures. So appropriations for expenditures, we're looking at all your departments, which run through page two through, let's see, through page 12 of your giant sheets. Again, this is similar to the slide for the, um, revenue. Each fiscal year has its expenditure stacked, um, by department and category. Since fiscal year 18, compared to proposed numbers for fiscal year '24, we have increased appropriations by 7.9 million, which is about a 57% increase. Fiscal '23, where we believe we'll end the year versus fiscal '24 is a 2.8 million increase, which is about $15 million. Or I'm sorry, 15%, $2 million and a 15% increase. Some of the same impacts you're seeing, um, expenditures have, have just went up. Inflation, $1 million in 2018 is $1.19 million today. We've also significantly invested in personnel with, um, the increase in our salary adjustments closer to market levels. You've also, um, increased your employee count, um, since then.
The biggest difference is in your police and fire, obviously, and you can see that graphically. Going back to 18, 19, and 20 on your, on your budget sheet, which is sheet five, in the personnel category, you can see that you're trending somewhere around $3 million invested in, in the police department. And then you see the first year FY '22 actual, '21 actual was when we had underemployment in the police department. Remember, we had the vacancy, so it actually fell below that average. And then you see the compensation plan kick in, and we went to fully staff, which moved us to 3.8. Then the year we're in, uh, we expect to end up at about 4.6 versus almost 5 next year. So you can see that we've really, the impact of, of the expenses has been in personnel. And it's been, it's been a significant, um, really a, a sea change to, to how the employees feel about their compensation. And I just want to make sure you all understand, number one, the employees I know appreciate that. But number, number two, it has put us in a much more strategic, and you've heard Randy brag and talk about the success of that. It has put us in a very, uh, competitive market with, uh, and I believe that the staff that we're getting, we're, we're getting, um, good quality candidates and, and I think that are, that are, you know, torchbears in our, in our region. And I think that's, Chief knows, you know, the quality of the officers he's dealing with on our staff, and I, I'm, you know, you can see it when you talk to him. And so, and I, and I've gotten comments in the last week about that, too, Chief, and I've not told you that, about the quality of officers that, you know, the way they're, they perceive as being treated. And so the, the success of that investment is, is evident to me.
And, and we've talked a lot about how it's more cost-effective to pay them upfront than retrain people that have to, you know, replace people and retrain them, so.
Yep, totally.
So you can, you can go through and see most, um, most departments have slight, are projected to slightly increase compared to fiscal year, where we're gonna end fiscal year '23. A lot of it is that projected personnel. Some of it is a bit inflation. We have the, uh, COLA amount from, uh, DLG. It's 6.5%. That does impact. But most, all the department heads are very, um, very responsive to where they are in their budgets and very, they, um, tend to be aware of, of, um, what we need from them and what they need to operate safely and, uh, effectively in their departments, but also manage, um, their budget well. So we didn't include, um, community agencies in this discussion. We're still, we'll have, we'll come back to that. It does include a bit of the departmental expenditures that are considered, um, necessary for operations, which includes your transfers to other funds. Um, we've removed all our capital from, um, this information. We also include debt service in this, uh, since that also has to be covered by your operating expenditures. Is there any category you guys want to delve into deeply?
So the general fund is, is ju, is balanced. It, it, the expenditures are under revenues. And, and so that's our starting point with dealing with all the other, other issues, such as capital, dealing with, you know, we, we will, by doing the estimated year-end, we're gonna know what our fund balance is, our fund bal, balance care for, for will be projected to be. So we'll have a good, good, uh, review of the cash position so that we can understand what you want to fund. Ca, cash fund capital versus debt service capital, you know, those, that's a discussion that we can have and, and things like that. Now that we know our core operating, uh, enterprise of the city government can, can be done, now the general fund services, that is, can be done under budget, uh, I mean, under revenues. And so we do know, know we have just a, just some cushion with the proposed changes for personnel. So then what we would ask to do is to, to So then what we would ask to do is to, to fund those at Randy's suggestion of taking the compensation study, doing it over two-year period. This is year one, that's funded, there's revenue in excess of, of the expenditures then. And so then we'll continue to build the budget off that premise.
I, I was going to make one comment that I hope we're all pleased with. The salary increases in, well, you call it public services now. That's really, has been the lower end of our, of our pay scale, and I just see drastic increases there, and I hope that they see that and understand that. And that's before I look at the benefits, just in salaries, that's just really looking.
Well, it's, it's interesting that you say that, as, you know, we've talked about that for a long time.
Yeah.
It's easy for the, the average citizen, when we talk to them, it's ea, you know, when they talk about, when you talk about the city government, you know, they're, they immediately see police and fire.
Yes.
So a lot of times, we talk about that the most because that's, everybody sees that every day. But just like the work occurring next to City Hall right now, we're, we're building that plaza because we've got staff at Public Works that can do that, that quality work. Right? And, and so the only way you end up there is you, you pay them an appropriate wage so that they can work for, for the city versus, you know, move them back into the private sector. And so the, the goal here then is to save money ultimately by not having to contract that out. So we appreciate Rick and Josh and all the, the team down there at Public Works that's able to, to, to implement this. And, and so we'll, little things like that, we do all over town more. And, and as we, as time passes, you will ultimately save some contract expenses by being able to do some of that work in-house.
Well, I was just giving you guys a good amount of time because otherwise I'm going to move on.
You did good.
And, and we can come back, obviously, we'll come back at the end if you guys have thought of anything or anything like that. I just don't want to move on to smaller funds if you guys still have any questions.
Appreciate that.
So the non-departmental will be updated after our next meeting.
So that include, well, ideally after the next meeting. But that includes some, community agencies has its own section. But that also, non-departmental includes transfers for capital if we are going to do some capital things, which can come from debt service or a fund balance pull-down. So the, the non-departmental numbers, those are, that's, that's not a finalized section, if that makes sense. So we tried to get that in a good.
I saw economic development was kind of lower than we had discussed.
That's a, that's a placeholder, so that we could get a good estimate of what our, our true excess revenue over operating is going to be.
And consider a baseline. Consider, we, you know, we, we looked at the, sheet eleven is what you're talking from right now. And, and we, our approach to that section was more of a baseline budget. And so what you'll look at, when you look at the airport board, for example, we tried to break out the capital. So we, we, we did the joint agencies, the airport board, planning and zoning is in at seventy-five thousand in the budget already. And then the economic development, we, we put, they asked for one fifty. We, we had plugged in a hundred because that's what we had, had been using, but we have fifty thousand for the development authority. I'm not sure if, if we take the fifty thousand in the year we're in, we talked about seeding them, seeding their bank account, both the city and county with, with that amount of money. You may not need to put money in the EDA this year. You see what I mean? And so then that fifty would roll back up to the, the EDC. So you, you still got a lot of flexibility within the budget, but we tried to create a baseline budget for those, those things. Now, the community agencies, the broader community agencies that aren't joint-funded, that aren't direct city government links are still, they're, they're in the budget at zero right now. So we're, we will ask that, how you want to treat that next week.
And just an asterisk by the sister cities expenses. They have also a separate sister cities, community agen, community agency allocation, but we hold their bank account for them. So they do still have funds to go out that aren't, that don't include the allocation. And that's what's on this non-departmental. So you see them twice.
And I'd almost like to see what the county's doing with the EDA, just because initially there was talk that city-county would keep putting money in, because it'll be ten years before you could actually do something significant. Because then it would build to, to the point you could actually purchase property.
Yeah.
Right.
And the mayor and I will, will have to follow up. We, we will be trying to schedule a meeting with Mr. Harris and, and his group and, and Judge Executive Bottoms. And, and here in the next few weeks, we've already talked about that. And in fact, we met with the mayor and the county judge this week already. And so we'll, we'll continue to do that and try to make, make the relationship stronger. Right? And, and continue to make sure we've got good information back and forth.
I like the way you said that, to make it stronger. Good questions, though. Other questions, comments?
Okay. So we'll slide on over to, these next are, are small, are smaller funds. Municipal aid, that's your, your revenues come from the state, gas tax, a small amount of interest. Your expenditures are restricted to improvements for streets and roads. You can, you can look over the timeline, it's page fourteen. We have received in more than we've spent out for several years. So you have a bit of a, a balance in there. So Josh is planning to spend that down a bit over the next year, which is why your revenues are at three hundred and fifty-eight estimated coming in from the state, three hundred and fifty-eight thousand. And we're expecting to spend about a million. But you have that fund balance available to pull that down.
Does that include Main Street, Rep. Manion? Okay, got you.
So your police and safety fund, that is page fifteen. Those revenues come from the state highway safety funds and also minimal interest. Your expenditures are restricted to police salaries and benefits, FICA and retirement, that they, the officers work specified, certain types of overtime, and the state will provide us funds for those. They've had just very minimal activity over the last several years. We're projecting expenses of, or I'm sorry, revenues of six point one and a thousand for, for everybody's benefit. And we are expecting about seven, seven thousand in expenses. It can be highly variable depending on how much overtime has actually worked. But those are, I probably need to tweak that a little bit. Those are usually one for one. They, they pay for the overtime worked, so. Your drug forfeiture funds.
That comes from Donna.
Have Donna do it, yeah. Drug forfeiture, page sixteen. Your revenues are penalties and interest, or penalties and forfeit, forfeits specifically related to drug policing matters, small amount of interest. Your expenditures are restricted to expenses related to drug, drug, drug policing. There's usually very minimal activity in this as well. We budgeted about five thousand fifty dollars in revenue and about five thousand dollars in expenses. But those, we don't have a lot of activity because the, we don't get a lot of funds from those activities, but we also, the, the purchases are extremely restricted.
Yeah, and the police don't tell us what they're investigating, so we never know.
Yeah. I don't, I don't, I don't know who it is.
It's all hush, right, Tony? I'm just kidding.
I was wondering, what, like, what do you spend it on? I've been curious about that for a while.
What's that is for?
Is for what?
Road miles.
Oh, okay. That's where Donna comes in.
Yeah.
You may have to skip a page since streets, gaps is all capital. We'll cover that at another meeting and move to park and recreation. Your revenue is on page eighteen. Operating revenues are budgeted at one point four million. Your operating expenditures are also budgeted at one point four million. We try to balance that. Their service revenue doesn't cover everything that the park and recreation does. So that is additional gaps are covered by the Boyle County contribution and the city's contribution. I did break those out so that you guys could see them visually a little better for the upcoming years, if you're looking on your, your spreadsheet. The Boyle County Fiscal Court is, we're anticipating three hundred and sixty-six thousand from them for the year. Service revenue, I didn't, I didn't grab a total. Transfers from the city will be about six hundred and eighty-eight, so it is more than, more than the city's, or I'm sorry, the fiscal court's contribution. And then the service revenue makes up the remainder. So they, their service revenue includes things for their, their, they rent out some pavilions they're building, their service fees for fitness center concessions, their programs, or they have a few sponsorships and sales. I know Josh and myself, along with park and recreation staff, are trying to come up with more ways to do sponsorships and things like that to expand the revenues from park and rec without impacting the programs. So this may, you know, maybe by the end of next year, this will be a, a different, you know, percentage-wise, those, those categories might change a bit.
Well, and I want to remind the commission that the transfer from our general funds is that the county's just basically giving money to help Millennium Park. We do additional funding with all the other parks, community parks that we.
Yes, a lot of folks do forget, we have a lot of city parks, you know, Jackson Park, Michael Smith Park, the splash pad that is down off Lexington Avenue. All those are included within the park and recreation fund. Jenny Rogers is included.
Yeah, so if you look at sheet nineteen, that's the Millennium Park. Twenty is the Bunny Davis Center, twenty-one is the pool. So each one of those are those subordinate budgets for those various expense centers, cost centers.
Yeah.
On that, I mean, on the, like, the community parks, that's all the little parks, right?
That's all of the, what we perceive as city parks.
Okay. And, I mean, we're going to have a meeting to maybe talk about some of this so that we'll know. I mean, I know that's.
We know we have to finish and continue.
Okay.
And, and ultimately, to be honest with you, before you get to answers on Parks and Rec, we may have to do a budget amendment on Parks and Rec somewhere down the road as that passes, just to clean that up based on what you all ultimately decide. So one of the things that, that we always restrict ourselves there are these artificial deadlines of saying, we have to make these decisions by July first. You don't have to do that.
Right.
And so if, if, if the commission needs six months to make a decision on what to do with next year's Parks and Rec capital, if we have to amend the budget to repair that, then that's what we do.
Yeah.
Right? So, so we're not, we're not, I'm not opposed to that. And, and certainly to me, that's better management than, than guessing and just to have a budget done.
Right.
So we want our budget to be as accurate as we can, and if we need to, to do a budget amendment to make it accurate, we'll do that. That's just work for lead.
That's fine. I, I signed up for that, that's good. But yeah, that's, that's the operations that we need just to maintain where we're at. Community parks does also currently include Jenny Rogers. I think there's a, a internal discussion to be had once it's up, fully furnished and up and running, that it might need its own expense category to better track those. But at this point, it is still lumped into community parks. Your revenues over the years, you know, we don't have as long a history as the other funds, obviously. Since fiscal year twenty-one, there's been an increase of about six hundred thousand dollars since last year. It does go up a lot since last year. Our estimation, about three hundred and seventy thousand. A significant portion of that is, is the salary adjustments that we're doing. Operational, operationally, I think there are a few, a few items have, park and rec, the revenue, the revenue and the expenses are heavily correlated because of that transfer and the contribution from the county. So when you talk about the revenue is going up, it means that also the expenses are going up. So you can see this, a similar increase in, in your operating expenditures. Should you all have any questions about any particular category of the, of the parks? We do have, we break out Millennium, the fitness center, which includes maintenance and things at the Bunny Davis building, the pool, and the community parks.
Do you think the county would, I mean, would contribute more to Millennium? I mean, or they don't contribute anything to Bunny Davis or to the pool?
Part of their allocation is for those things, and it's delineated like that. Now that, I think the bigger, the beginning conversation really, though, is what, how do they want to see themselves as, for example, in the fairgrounds? What investment do they want to have out there? I think, and I've said this, and I know, I, I know the, somebody told me the other day, well, that's not my circus, not my monkeys. Well, that's true for, for me too, but I'm also a taxpayer in the county.
Exactly.
And, and, and I, I mean, I live, you know, it matters to me what the county government does and as a taxpayer. And, you know, I would like to see the county, my county government responsive and, and still actively engaged in parks and recreation and the assets that the county residents enjoy and along with the city, those county residents that choose to live inside of the city. And, and so I think that, that's a joint workshop probably that we, we still, we want to get back into the habit of having with COVID and everything. I think that we've really not done a good job of meeting with the county frequently enough. I think the, the mayor and the county judges have consistently met. But I think it's, it's good that the fiscal court and city commission sit down together and break bread too. And so we'll get back to that. And, and when we try to identify that core things, that the ten things you want to do with the master plan, I think it's healthy to sit down with the county and talk about those ten things, you know, and see, see what they, how they feel about funding those things. And they may not want to do anything, I don't know, but it's worth the conver, we need to have that conversation.
Yeah, regardless of where you live in Boyle County, any city or outside of any city, you're still a Boyle County resident. And I constantly have to remind people of that. You even have to remind some commissioners and some magistrates of that.
Everybody in this room is a county voter.
Yes, yes.
Right. I mean, and I just think that, you know, all the little, you know, all the basketball and baseball and softball, and all of the programs are, look at all the participants.
Yeah.
I mean, they may live in the county, there may be more in the county than in the city. So I just would like to see that conversation happen.
Yep, we're on, we're on the same page with that, for sure.
See, and you're right on target, and it'd be nice to have some new, fresh people at the table for those discussions. It must be great. Some of us have had them for several years now. They have some fresh, new people. They have some fresh new people that come into the table as well, though, so we agree.
I feel like we had a good first step in terms of the county. The county just wants to be informed. And when they showed up for Josh's special call meeting with Parks and Rec, so that the committee, Parks and Rec Committee, could have input, two magistrates showed up and I, I could tell that was making a difference. They just, they want to know what's going on, they want input. And it's still run by the city, but they, they have an investment.
Yep.
Yep.
And let's not forget, Parks and Rec is also required, is asked to present to the commission and to the court. A lot of times we say upon request, but they, they're willing to do that all the time.
Yeah, we need to be more proactive with communication outwardly to the county sometimes ourselves, just like we want them to be open and communicate with us. You know, we got to do a good job, especially those joint, joint functions like Parks and Rec.
Yes.
Yeah.
Good discussion, Don.
So we will, and like I said earlier, we will have a section at the end where we can come back and let you discuss anything, jump between funds or departments. Our cemetery fund for fiscal year twenty-four, we're budgeting, estimating four hundred, four hundred four thousand in revenues and the same four hundred four thousand in expenses. This is an enterprise fund, which for those of you that may or may not know, it's operated similarly to a business entity. So you want to balance those out. Your revenue consists of transfer from the general funds, which is fairly significant. Services, which include cemetery lot sales, services that the cemetery employees have, may have to provide when it's necessary. You have a small amount of interest that's allocated to that fund. Your expenses include personnel, your contracts, general service expenses and your debt service. Revenues fluctuate, have fluctuated quite a bit in this fund. And not to be too morbid, you do have some big spikes during COVID. Part of that was COVID, part of that was that we've opened up more cemetery spaces for sale in the last few years. Between the la, between fiscal year eighteen and twenty-four, we're estimating at about a hundred and thirty-one thousand increase in revenue. Between this year and next year, we're estimating about ninety thousand more than prior year in total revenue. And that, your cemetery is all on one page, page twenty-four of your large packet. Your revenues, because it's a small fund, your revenues are just at the top of the sheet and your expenses are broken out into multiple categories at the bottom.
You said the revenue increase is probably because, well.
A lot of, like fiscal year twenty-one.
Right, that I can, right.
Yeah, I think a lot of the other.
Lot sale, lot sale.
Well, so we've opened up, this year you would anticipate a higher sell. We've already got a lot more interest in that new section.
Yeah.
And so you're going to see a bump this year. You, you won't necessarily have that next year.
Okay.
Or maybe you have it over two years versus, you know, five. But, you know, it, it's going to spike a little bit and then it'll fall back off because you've got a new section open.
And I, I think the decrease in fiscal year twenty-two and twenty-three was just a matter of expenses. We're extremely, we're low that year. I'd have to look detailed. A lot of it was.
You had a vacancy for a while.
Yeah, and that, that.
In both of those years.
Revenue, that green section is your general front, fund transfer. So that, that, if we don't need the transfer, we don't do it. So that brought that down in twenty-two. And then twenty-three, the transfer wasn't quite as much. So your expenses, you have your three categories. I've got the, I've got the wrong label on that, that's my fault. Your three categories are personnel, contractual expenses, and then other. The personnel is that green column. Blue column is your contracts, which include like your mowing contract. That's the biggest expense for the cemetery fund. And then your other, you do have a small amount of debt service related to vehicle expenses. We have fleet vehicles that they use in the cemetery fund that's included. So the, the trends mimic the revenue trends because we really do try to balance those really closely. Stormwater, which is the next page in your packets, page twenty-five is also one sheet. Your revenue is listed at the top and your categories of expenses are at the bottom. Revenues for stormwater include your operating revenue, your stormwater fee that is on, that comes with your utility bill. You have a small amount of interest, a very, very small sliver. Your expenses include personnel, contract services, other miscellaneous items, and your debt service for this as well. You do have a, a few different debt service items.
So, so let me talk about that a little bit. Josh can be prepared to fill in the gap. But with the stormwater fund, you know, that's twenty years old nearly. And, and, you know, we've not really addressed a lot of the, the big expenditures that we would like to have had done. And then also administratively, you know, we need to make sure our rates are still applied correctly. We need to audit that. And so then Josh has a, a big hat, a lot of big hats. And, and so for me, this is the spot where we want to add the EIT to assist Josh with administering the stormwater program. So a lot of it has to do with inspections. It's a great training platform to get someone into your environment of the city and, and learning where things are and learning relationships of who's in the community. And, and so, so this is the, the, so part of the reason it's upside down in the year that you're going into, we're projecting to pull down the fund balance for this year. Just because partly too, we know Josh is going to get to the end of the design for these two mini basins and, and we'll get to a capital program that's more robust. And so, you know, you all will have to have future conversations with how you fund that and to what extent you fund it. And, and, and so we know that this is going to be revised over the next fourteen months probably or twelve months. And, and so anticipate that yourself and knowing that we're going to be having discussions about the, the stormwater rate, the stormwater program, capital program for stormwater, what's the next phase of it.
Have we ever changed the rate, Josh?
No.
It's been the same for many years, right?
Right, right, but we checked a lot of boxes with that. I mean, we, we, you know, we, we, it was, it's, it's been well served. And I, I'm not saying it's going to go up a lot. It's just you all have to decide what you want to do with that program. And, and so, but this is the place where you need to fund an EIT, like I said. And so this money is where the EIT position is coming from. It's coming from your fund balance and, and then the year we're going into and next year. If you don't do anything to the rate or you don't do anything with the capital program, that, that EIT is going to be out there coordinating the work at, in-house out of that, for, for that. Does it make sense, Josh? Just so he don't have to get up and talk to the.
So we, when I look back at what we did in two thousand eight, setting the, the stormwater program up, it was meant to, it was meant to fund operations, but it was also meant to fund capital projects. And the capital has kind of lagged behind and it's become a point where it's, it just funds operations at this point. And we've, we haven't changed the rate, so we've kind of grown into it over fifteen years. But it's getting to a point now where, you know, we may need to, we may need to look at the rate for operations, but if we want to really tackle capital projects in a big way, we'll need to, we'll need to raise this rate and, and match that. So what I'd like to do over the next year is as we get into sub basin F and we start to do some projects out of there, that will inform what the rest of the capital program would look like. So we can actually sit down and kind of do like we're doing with Parks right now, a long-term capital planning. That way we know what that rate needs to be and we can make, we can make an informed decision about that.
So adjusted for inflation, we've been losing ground a little bit on the, but it's, like you say, it's been doing what it needs to do.
Yeah, we've been compliant with the permit. We've been compliant, we, we've done some basin projects. But I mean, it's not outperformed the market probably. I mean, it's been consistent with what other cities has done and, and probably, you know, my opinion.
This chart is just the revenues over the years. There are, like, they, they look like large fluctuations on the chart just because of the, the size that we had to blow up this chart. But if you look at the numbers, there's a, a fairly minimal fluctuation in true operating revenues, which is that green column. And fiscal year seventeen, eighteen, you're at about six hundred thousand in total, five eighty-four for operating fees. And we're estimating for this fiscal year, six hundred thousand. So that's a twenty thousand dollar difference since fiscal year twenty-eighteen. That's not a lot of fluctuation. The other fluctuation in the blue column has to do, occasionally we'll sell property. Those get input in there and sometimes that can give you a large seeming variance. For fiscal year twenty, we, we had some property sales, which almost doubled your other category. So it looks skewed, but in reality, total dollar wise, you're not fluctuating much over the years. Obviously, since the rate's not changed and you've not had probable, well, I can't say this a hundred percent, but I would assume that you haven't had tremendous, significant new water customers, which would impact your revenue stream. So the, the chart is a bit misleading in the visual of it. If you can't see the actual numbers, the whole chart ranges in a hundred thousand dollars, so. Your operating expenditures have fluctuated category wise a bit over the year. You can see in that last fiscal year twenty-four, the increase from the EIT position and the salary adjustments that we're planning. Your other categories fluctuate a bit, but they, they've really worked on coming down on some expenses in that other miscellaneous category. But there's only been since fiscal year twenty-four, there's been about a four hundred thousand dollar increase projected, but the most, that's significantly the new position and salary increases for next year.
What is a EIT?
Engineering training. I could have been more.
I knew that, but I didn't know, what's the market for pay for one of those, I'm just curious.
What did you and Randy say, Lon?
Five thousand dollars in place. I think we're looking at, you know, starting pay rate to fifteen, sixteen. The market says sixteen, but government market probably.
So it'd be a hundred and something thousand dollar expense total.
Hundred thousand dollar total expense all in, yeah.
And then they have an additional for staff members in the stormwater fund. So those salary adjustments get thrown in there too, for those existing employees.
Street sweeper, for example, is one, one that you got to remember.
That's right, that's the stormwater.
Right, that's the stormwater, water quality.
So we will move on to the garbage fund, which is page twenty-six of your packet. The garbage fund is another that ideally balances your revenue, doesn't, your, your expenditures don't exceed your revenue and your revenue isn't exceeding your expenditures. We're estimating one point four million in revenue and one point four million in expenditures. This is, I've just done one graph for this because there's minimal activity. Garbage funds, your revenues come from the fee associated with your garbage pickup. And the expenditures include the contract with our garbage provider, which is Republic Services currently. And it includes garbage abatement provided by, that we pay to the fiscal court. And those, you can see most years, they are neck and neck. Occasionally you'll have a timing difference where the payment will, will, you know, an extra payment will be lumped into one period and then the revenue will come in the period after. But those are very similar in expenditure versus revenue.
The, if you'll think back, Kevin, you, you, you were here especially. I know, I, I think, all of, I know Donna was. But remember when we talked about the recycling? Remember the era when we implemented?
Yeah.
That, that was around two thousand five, two thousand ten in that window.
Right, yeah.
We, as a community, have not looked at garbage to make sure we're doing it right since then. We, we did do a contract renewal on your Republic, on your pickup services. The, I do, I, I do think that's, needs to be added to the city county agenda. At the time, we aligned, we, we worked real hard around that two thousand and seven window with the county in multiple meetings to make sure we were all on the same page and aligned with the ideology of how to, how to take care of solid waste in our community. And I think we do need to add that to our agenda with the county to make sure we're doing it efficiently, to make sure we're, we're achieving the results for, for everybody in, in, in the correct, healthy, positive way. So I do, do think that's a good agenda item for that joint workshop with the county in the future.
We are, obviously, we participate in the county program again, or we do not?
We, we, we are participant, so the.
We pay for the.
The county has a solid waste coordinator position that's established. We are contributing half that.
Okay.
We're about forty-five, no, I don't know that it's half.
Yeah, it does say grant, that's just unfortunately the last four, yes, that's the.
It's a grant out, is what it is. It's a grant out to the county to, to co-fund that position. I'm not saying it's half, it's forty-five thousand plus or minus. And, and then, so, so it's what the city's contributing. And that's good that we're doing that and good that we're, we're helping, helping contribute to that expense.
Yeah, yeah, I think we had a previous city manager who wanted to go out of that, maybe have it on.
So forty-five thousand is the agreed contract amount and it's a, I think it's a ten-year agreement.
Yeah, and they do a really good job. I just, I think a lot of the coordinator, the new coordinator too, so.
I would just, I would like to talk about, I mean, you know, in that position too. I know the former coordinator, there was a lot of trash pickup in the community because you go around and all around the town now, there's a lot of trash. And so I would like to see, you know, us talk about that more because they used to in that position and I don't think they do anymore, so. Well, I'm just saying, I thought that that was part of that job.
You say a lot of free labor though, I think, pick up the community. In a time, you're going to lose a bunch of us in about ten minutes, you might lose the whole commission.
Yeah, let's finish, we can finish the slideshow up and then we can hand it to you for next week.
Yeah, I can, I can talk a lot quicker. Utility funds.
It's been good, Don.
Yeah.
We're estimating, this is just operations, twelve point two million in operating revenue. Your biggest categories are of course water service, sewer service. And then the other remaining categories make up the totality. There's a lot of little items that make up that twelve million dollars. Operating expenditures, we have budgeted out at eleven point nine, which covers all of your operating departments, utility admin, the water plant, water distribution, wastewater treatment. treat, water, wastewater treatment plant, sewer collection, the parival, um, uh, category. You have a few non-capital outlays. Um, they also have a non-departmental, um, budget that has a few items in it and debt service. Your revenues, um, correlate heavily with your rates, obviously, um, which is dependent on your COLA rates and, um, debt service when new debt is created.
Let me interrupt you right there. On this slide too, remember we did the meter replacement program? A big part of that, this is the also, and it's not stated on the slide, is the actual upgrade of the meter system. Meaning that, that you have aged meters before we changed those out and you see a reflection in the revenue that's then act more accurately recording water flow. Right?
Okay, yeah.
Right, that, that accounts for a portion of the increase.
And that's under the train umbrella, isn't it?
Correct, right, right. So that's a benefit, uh, that, this slide perfectly illustrates the net impact of that, the big, the part of that project.
So you don't see as many fluctuations as you do in other, um, funds in the revenue. Um, it is a very steady, um, increase. Your expenditures have fluctuated a bit over the years um, and it does change in fiscal year twenty-two with the separation of the utility admin as its own department and pulling that out of, um, finance and creating its own section there at the bottom in the little, in the green. Um, you also have, um, your increases are in the last fiscal year for twenty-four. Um, a lot of it is related to your personnel. Um, you also have some debt service, um, that increased in twenty-one. The debt service began in fiscal year twenty-one, um, which increased that very top column, your mustard yellow, we'll say. Um, that increased significantly in fiscal twenty-one, which changes. Um, your non-departmental, which is that light blue at the top, has shrank. That is, if you remember, we had a bit of a discussion on reducing that inter-fund charge for the expenses related to the general fund. And so that's slowly been brought down. Um, the other departments, um, for the most part have stayed fairly steady over the last fiscal years with a few, um, increases for the salary adjustments and for just, um, inflationary changes over the years.
Yeah, that inter-fund charge, although it's smaller, is replaced by the green bar at the bottom. So the, we're, we're making those known and measurable expenses tied to the utility at a direct utility cost. So those two combined then would be a lot closer to what it was before.
Do you all have any utility fund questions?
It's pretty straightforward and, and the expenses on the water plant side varies with water chemistry and demand and the expenses on the wastewater plant can really vary with the intensity of, from a chemical perspective, if you have a dry year, it's very hard to treat. If you have a very wet year, it can be, your, your pumping costs can vary wildly. And so those are your cost centers at, on the utility side that are totally dependent on weather, really, and out of the control of staff.
Sources, where is that showing here, like?
Uh, on the, the wholesale, it shows up as water sales. We can do a report for you, if you want to see that broken out somewhere, we can. That is increasing this year.
Right, who are we servicing entirely?
So we're, we're adding, um, Springfield Utility Commission.
Okay.
With the workout parable, that is a new customer. They are going to be, you know, somewhere between two hundred fifty and seven hundred thousand gallons a day, which is a, a by percentage a big amount, right? Uh, so if your total demand's six million gallons a day, you can kind of see how that impacts your overall operating expenses and your revenue, right? And so then we, we continue to sell to everyone in Bull County, Parks and Water District as a wholesaler and, uh, Lake Village to the north. Gare County's still a customer, although, although their usage has gone very, very low, a lot lower with Lancaster. Um, you've got Houstonville, it's still, is, i- and that we, you know, we're talking about connecting to McKinney. McKinney needs an alternative source with Stanford and we're, we still try to augment Stanford on a peak day, dry weather, when they have an issue, you know, they may call us. Um, it's an emergency connection now, they're not a consistent buyer.
So currently it, it just gets lumped into that green, um, okay, the bigger green.
If you would like to see that report, uh, uh, analysis of that, I mentioned Marshall and he'll conclude it in the next update at a regular commission meeting.
I think it'd be interesting to see.
So just to clarify, so all the utility budget is about thirty million? And then all the expenses is about thirty million?
Twelve, revenue is twelve.
Operating revenue is different than the total appropriation. And, and the total appropriation accounts for some of your capital that you already have going on.
So when you're, when you're looking at that sheet, that spreadsheet, page twenty-seven, that top, um, there's two sections of it, right?
Right.
That first section is your operations. So that should be funding your day-to-day maintenance and, um, things like that of the, um, operations of the wa- utility department, all those, um, individual departments. That bottom section is, is, um, heavily reliant on, like, that, there's a six, eleven million and six million. Those are, um, grants and loans and things like that that are related to capital. I didn't really want to discuss those numbers because those are heavily dependent on what we decide regarding capital.
Yeah, yeah, the, the, what, when, when it comes to the utility, what, what we're looking at to make sure we're whole is the operations of, we, we pay the water plant, wastewater plant, distribution, collection, non-departmental debt service. Right, so once we get to that, those are the core operating expenses of the, of the utility. And so then we make sure that this number is, exceeds that, right? Because this is your core operating revenue, right? And so go back to the slide before that, one more. And so in the year we're in, the rate-funded revenue is, and, and other, you know, the sale of property, that's twelve million, two hundred and seventy-seven thousand. And our baseline operating expenses to keep us operational and pay our debt is eleven million, nine forty-eight, right? Decisions on capital are always, when you all make them, you know, we, we're going to throw those out there to you when we think they're necessary and we go forward with what you all tell us to do. Skip ahead and then see what's next.
Seem fun. So.
Not a lot of change there, um.
Yeah, you just had that spike, um, that was obviously related to the purchase of, um, four fifteen West Main, uh, that last fiscal year. Otherwise, it is, um, a very small, um, fund that, um, expenses include utilities, um, insurance, building maintenance, and there is some debt service related to the energy effi- efficiency project from a few years back um, that occur in that fund. So your, um, estimated revenues are, which includes your transfer from the general fund. This is page thirty-eight, um, thirty-seven thousand, thirty-seven point eight thousand. And your estimated expenses are thirty-seven point eight thousand. That's another one that we balance expenditures with the, um, transfer. So, and then parking is our last fund for today. Which is your last page, page thirty-nine, uh, parking revenues. Um, and this is operations, um, if, you know, capital comes into the discussion later on, um, we'll have a funding discussion about that. But operating revenues are four hundred thousand, um, operating expenditures are also four hundred thousand. Your, uh, revenue from the parking fund, um, includes a transfer from the general fund, your parking fines, um, the parking rental fees for the garage and the lots that are out there. Uh, expenditures include, um, the personnel related to the parking garage, um, your other minor items, contracts, other services, and debt service related to the parking garage. You have, um, your revenue, um, it, it changes, um, significantly based on, um, that transfer from the general fund, which is again related to your expenses. Um, for instance, this fiscal year, we've had some unexpected expenses at the garage that we didn't anticipate. So the transfer, um, is larger than, uh, previous years. We're not anticipating those for next year, so we pulled that back down.
We also had a reduction in income because of.
We did.
Free parking.
We did, um. And then we've also gotten rid of, like, some of our leases we've, that were, um, up and that we just didn't, we didn't have new people create leases. We opened a few spaces up for public parking while the project is ongoing, things like that. Um, your, um, expenditures, um, over the last several fiscal years, again, you see that same spike that mimics the revenue in fiscal twenty-three. Um, just some unexpected things we didn't believe were going to happen, um, in that blue category. And then that's pulled back down for fiscal year twenty-four.
So over the five-year look back, looking at COVID in the middle of it, going up and down and going wild, um, I think, you know, comparing eighteen to where you're at right now, you're about where you would probably have expected to be, given that you've over-invested in personnel with intent, right? Like you, you went above and beyond on your compensation, trying to get back to where the market really says you should be. And so, um, the good news is, is that the operations are still under revenue in, in every department but stormwater. And we're being intentional about spending that fund balance down with, by adding an employee to that, that department, which we believe will improve the service of stormwater to the community. And, um, now we will, uh, leave, I guess, that's the last slide. Um, and so to get everybody out of here, I know the mayor has somewhere he needs to be at twelve. And so what we'll do is, um, the department heads have some requests. We'll, we'll try to communicate what those were. I don't really know that, you know, for me, the priority is making sure that we stay on our market path for our existing compensation. So I wasn't really keen on trying to talk about adding more people yet. I think, uh, we've, we've done that over the last couple of years. I think that probably the conservative thing to do is just sit on that this year, frankly. Um, and I've not really had to even that conversation with some of the staff yet. That's just what's in my head. Um, and so we'll, uh, we'll steer towards next week. And, and if you have any questions, take those sheets with you, look at them, uh, email them out. We'll try to get them answered, um, and, and be prepared next week to expand on the information, expand on the conversation with where we're at today.
Well, first of all, I'll say thanks to
Yeah, appreciate it.
Lee and Earl for this presentation and for the data that's included in it. Um, FYI, all five of us have a twelve o'clock obligation. I should say, all, entertainer motion to, uh, to adjourn.
I'm, we adjourn.
For second?
Second.
Oh, it was in favor of saying, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.